Speak for Ms. Brenner.
Good afternoon, I call the meeting to order for the February 9th study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We're going to go now in turn to current business and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you need clarification regarding any item? Councilmember O'Neil? Councilmember Dixon?
I have none, thank you.
Councilmember Blom?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Duffield? Councilmember Muldoon? And I have none. Next item on the is the presentation from the Orange County Human Relations. Human Relations Board?
Commission?
Commission?
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, here we go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Ms. Long, Chief John Lewis, and community members. My name is Minza Malik and joining me is Jim McQueen and we're here from Orange County Human Relations. We are here tonight to report on some of the work of our nonprofit organization in the city of Newport Beach over the last year and present you with copies of our annual report.
At OC Human Relations, we believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence. So we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. OC Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging issues such as the lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation of all residents in decision-making process, in the decision-making process, and building positive relationships between police and residents. Cities and schools call on us regularly for helping community-building efforts as well as navigating conflict.
For example, during this time of crisis, we are supporting households through mediation as we have seen a rise in family and neighbor-to-neighbor conflicts as the pandemic has significantly changed the way we engage with each other in our homes and communities. In 2020, unfortunately, the spread of COVID-19 has paralleled an increase in hate incidents and crimes against people perceived to be of Asian heritage. Additionally, the death of George Floyd sparked a pivotal moment in the current civil rights movement which collided in a storm of human relations issues. And we've received a tidal wave of requests to help facilitate brave conversations, deliver presentations about OC civil rights history, and provide various trainings in implicit bias, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are pleased to announce that we have created and launched Orange County Together that will offer a training series for corporate and nonprofit organizations, schools, and communities during the 2021 fiscal year. In recent years, we have also worked with electeds to design and lead forums on interfaith work and civility.
This support is possible in large part because of the City Do's program. This program was developed almost 30 years ago with the City Managers Association. Cities across the county can make per capita contribution to our nonprofit so that we're able to maintain our capacity to respond and support cities when needed. We hope that the city of Newport Beach would not hesitate to reach out at times when our expertise can help your city.
We are pleased to share how we worked with residents in Newport Beach our last fiscal year. We mediated 37 court intake cases, three community intake cases and police community mediations in the courts or community where one of the parties was a resident of the city of Newport Beach. In collaboration with the County of Orange, local law enforcement agencies, schools, and community organizations and residents, we also document hate crimes and incidents. And in Newport Beach, we documented no hate crimes and only four hate incidents. Also, 925 youth participated in our Bridges Safe and Respectful Schools Program. Fifty students participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoe Symposium at Cal State Fullerton, learning about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in your school and community. One youth attended our Human Relations Ambassador Program and two attended the Youth Leadership Institute.
In conclusion, OC Human Relations has appreciated your city's membership in our City Do's program. We support schools and cities in building safe and respectful communities. We address community conflict and strife. We sustain a human relations infrastructure to serve cities when crisis situations occur. Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil should the impact come.
We would like to thank the city for your membership and we will be mailing a certificate from our office location once it opens. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the important work Orange County Human Relations does and we really appreciate you coming and giving us the report of your activities. All right, next up is a report on the current status of the Housing Element Update Process.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and City Councilmembers, thank you so much. Simone Georgis, your Community Development Director, with me is Jim Campbell, who's the Deputy Community Development Director. We do have a presentation about 18 slides to just really talk about the Housing Element Update, what we've seen so far and what were kind of the, some of the issues that we're going to have to address later on. So, a little background, as council understands and knows, and so does the community, that our RENA is about 4,834 units. So the council did authorize staff to go ahead and file an appeal. And out of the 191 cities and counties in the SCAG region, there were 52 appeals filed, which is a staggering amount, and it tells you how onerous this RENA cycle is. We filed an appeal against the city of Santa Ana and we filed an appeal against our own RENA numbers, and both of them were denied. In fact, 50 of the 52 appeals were denied. Two of the appeals from different cities and counties were approved, Pico Rivera and Riverside County. For Pico Rivera, it was regards their, there's the Whittier Narrows Dam, which was deemed by the Army Corps of Engineers as less than sufficient, and it can actually rupture. So there's about 2,900 units that needs to get reallocated. For Riverside County, there was issues, an error made in the SCAG calculation, so there's about another 300 units there. In total, there's going to have to reallocation of units. So we're projecting for city of Newport Beach, our RENA will go up. It'll go up between 10 to 15 units. We don't have the exact number just yet, but that final RENA allocation will be issued beginning of March. But again, we think our RENA number will go from 4,834 to possibly 4,844 or a little bit more. Let's talk about our Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. So the council appointed nine members of the community plus one of our City Council Members, Will O'Neil, who attends the committee meetings. The committee's been working really hard. They've been doing enormous amount of work on this Housing Element Update. They've held nine meetings since July. We got off to a slow start due to COVID. They have formed six subcommittees. And so if you understand, you've got 10 members, then you're going to break off to different subcommittees that are studying different subject matters. And we've kind of outlined those subject matters, everything from affordable housing to sites in the airport area, to sites in West Newport, to Newport Center, to sites with regards underneath the airport takeoff areas. They have literally reviewed, and I'm not exaggerating, hundreds and hundreds of sites. So all that data is getting collated by our consultant, Kimberly Horn. And we should have a lot more information to share with our Housing Committee members and with the public with regards to where the sites are, what's our housing numbers looking like, is there a gap, and what are going to be the, kind of the suitabilities as we go forward. So these are, this is the area, this is kind of, think of it as just more of a heat map. This is the areas our Housing Committee's been really focusing on. So you have to the north by the airport, the airport area, to the far right of your screen, to the south or east, is the Coyote Canyon. There's about 22 acres that are not part of a landfill. There's actually solid ground over there that the committee is looking at. You have Newport Center in the center and you have West Newport. And off to the right there of your screen, we still include Banning Ranch. Banning Ranch is still part of our general plan, about 1375 units. We're including it in our next cycle Housing Element. We've dialogued with the property owner. They're amenable for us to continue to include our, that portion of Banning Ranch, or that Banning Ranch into the Housing Element as we go forward, as they haven't really finalized their deal with their trying to transfer that title of that property or sell that property. So one important takeaway from this map is you can see that the Housing Committee is not trying to impact any of our residential neighborhoods. You can see the peninsula, the islands, Corona del Mar, Santa Ana Heights, West Newport, you see in Newport Coast, all our residential neighborhoods are intact. These are the areas where we think there's opportunity, mostly in our office, light industrial, and commercial areas.
Mr. Mayor, real quick on this slide. Brad? Can I? Okay, thanks. Simone, sorry, that's the first time, I'm hearing that the property owner says we can put it into the next one, so.
On Banning Ranch, I'm sorry?
Yeah, on Banning Ranch. When we're looking at that, are we breaking that down into any type of affordable as well?
Yes, we are breaking it down from an affordability component. We've reached out to HCD and kind of given the backstory on Banning Ranch, you know, here we're at, we want to include it, we haven't gotten response from HCD. So there is an affordability component. We've had dialogue with the Coastal Commission, with the Executive Director. You know, there's definitely hesitation about a future project over there, but we are going to continue to include it unless the council directs us otherwise.
Okay. Since we've been kind of living this for a little while, and fortunately for council, they, most of us haven't, when we're going to the next slide, are you about to go to the next one?
Yes.
Okay. Could you, could you just explain real quickly, at the end of this process, what do we have to provide to HCD that justifies us looking at all of these individual specific units so that council understands what this process has been and why we're talking about so many specific sites instead of general areas?
Correct, thank you. That's a good, very good point. So this is our West Newport light industrial area, you know, the committee has looked at about 200 properties. And the reason why we're focusing on each individual properties, because not all properties are prime for redevelopment. If it is a small parcel, you're just not going to get a lot of units out of it. If it is a building that is fully occupied, say with office tenants, which we have, there's not really going to be a need to redevelop the property. The change this cycle compared to previous cycles is what they call substantial evidence. We have to prove that parcel of land is going to turn over to housing in the next eight years. In the past, it was just easy for us just to put an overlay to say, you know, there's housing opportunities everywhere and, c'est la vie, if housing actually gets developed or not. And HCD has pushed back very hard, they've communicated with their legislators at the state level and said, "We need more than just an overlay. We need evidence, we need proof, we need documentation, we need a letter from the property owner, we need lease agreements, we need a demolition permit, we need evidence." And we've pushed back on that and we've drafted a bill to kind of take away that whole subjectivity of what is substantial evidence. And it's not 100% clear. That's why this Housing Element is so difficult, that's why we have to look at every single property and parcel and make sure that is prime for redevelopment. And then Jim Campbell here has been reaching out to all the property owners and trying to get something from the property owner to say, "Yeah, I will turn over that property." You know, do we need 100% of the letters from every single parcel? We're not 100% sure yet. You know, but we're making that effort to get 100% documentation. And I'll turn to Jim, how much documentation have we gotten so far?
That's a good question. It's actually, the return rate on that is actually pretty low. Some areas, we're getting about a 10% return rate, and that's just of the letters we sent out to the sites that we considered to be potentially feasible or feasible. And so, you know, some are saying, "No, we're not interested, you know, we're perfectly fine as we are." And others are saying, "Yeah, we'll consider it." And so we're getting a mixture, you know, some areas a little higher than others. We got 100% return rate on the Coyote Canyon site, so that's good. It's one site.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Georgis, you want to, just to amplify your point, in the Governor Newsom's current proposed budget is a line item for a new entity, a new part of our bureaucracy in Sacramento that will be called, that is called, right now, the Housing Accountability Board, I believe. And its sole purpose is to be funded and with enabling legislation to work with cities and local agencies and counties to come down and sit in city council meetings and planning commission meetings to see if there is true determination to convert these properties into residential. So we may say, "Well, we only have 10% people responding." We're going to have somebody sitting in our chambers saying, "I want to see evidence, I want to see proof."
That's correct, Councilmember Dixon. This is a new line item budget, a new compliance unit as they framed it. They've discussed it as a unit of the state to help cities. It is definitely an enforcement unit. And we've heard, we've talked to different staff members at the state level, HCD wants more teeth, they wanted more enforcement, they want more penalties. They're not playing fair and they're playing hardball. Of course, they'll tell us that it's there to help us.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, so real quick, just to amplify what Simone just said there, so eventually we need to turn in to HCD all the way down to Assessor's Parcel Number, the property, the number of units the property owner says they plan on converting into housing, and also designate within that number how many are going to be in each tier of affordability. As you can imagine, it's not exactly an easy thing for someone who's done nothing but commercial and, you know, as we're looking at this, to say, "Well, yeah, I'm going to switch my plan up completely and go residential, and this is how many it's going to be and at this affordability level." Because most people have never, first off, most people have never done affordable housing. It's a pretty specialized niche, and one of the things that we've learned by having a couple of affordable housing experts on our, on our subcommittee, which by the way, before I forget, I should probably say thank you very much to all of the committee members who are serving on the Housing Committee. Those subcommittees have done a lot of work and you see all of these numbers, they've actually gone through all of these and tried to figure out what makes sense. So the, it's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a lot of paper at the end of this, but the challenge, and it's a huge challenge, is finding the exact properties. And so there are going to be things, I read through the presentation, so I'm going to wait until the end to talk about some of the policy ideas that you've got here, because I have a handful of other ones to discuss. But I wanted to point all this out because, you know, as we're working through this and we're talking about ADUs and we're talking about a whole bunch of other things, this is really hard. It's just really hard. And I've had, I've had some council members up in Northern California that I know through a variety of different ways. I've had a couple of them call me in the last month and just say, "So we're starting to go through this RENA thing and, you know, how are you, how are you finding compliance?" And I said, "Well..." And so I, to one of them, I said, "We're just waiting for you to start realizing what RENA is, because at that point, you will probably be able to apply the political will that Orange County and LA haven't been able to do so far." But I do send them to our 2020 Housing Action Plan website. And it's, you know, for anyone who hasn't been on there and listening to this right now in the public, I recommend looking at that, the 2020 Housing Action Plan. It shows you how active our city's been in, on this issue, and I don't want people thinking that we've been sitting on it. It's, we're trying, we're trying really, really hard and I want people to know that. But anyway, I'll wait for the end to talk policy, but I wanted to make sure I highlighted all of this.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, as you did this sort of a survey of property owners, reaching out to 200?
Actually, far more than that. We did this citywide. This is just an example of the West Newport Mesa area. So there's a combination of light industrial properties, residential properties that might be viewed as underutilized, so we might be looking at a higher density here, and that's sort of the issue that we're going through at the committee level. But 200 properties in this area, most were deemed not feasible, but there were hundreds of properties citywide, the airport area, Newport Center, there's various other parcels here and there, if you will, citywide.
So deemed not feasible because of their size? Not the owners' hell no?
Well, that factors into it. I think the owner's willingness to change land uses in the next eight years is definitely helpful in terms of providing evidence. It's not solely based upon that, and parcel size is a big deal. The improvement value to the land value, when you have little improvements but a lot of land, it might work, big parking lots. Obviously, parking is at a premium for some of these buildings, but it has to be replaced. And so we're looking at all these factors.
But do you get a sense that a percentage of what we might really yield?
Well, we're working on that right now. In fact, we've seen some early views of it, and I think we're going to be sharing a preview of it with Mr. Tucker tomorrow, the chairman of the Housing Element Update Committee. We'll be bringing it to the committee's full attention next week, Wednesday evening at 6:00. And so we're looking at this particular area and other areas, as indicated, and we're looking at different densities, which will then kind of create unit yields, if you will, based upon the acreages of the sites that we think are feasible. And so there's a couple of variables, you know, are all the sites going to redevelop or is half the site's going to redevelop? What's the right density so we can change the densities and get different unit yields? And the higher densities means more affordability, or the prospects for more affordability. And so all of that will be kind of highlighted to the committee next week, Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. So continue here, you know, we're looking at the airport office areas, again, we've got 83 of those properties were evaluated and 40 of them were found to be potentially feasible. Newport Center, it's been really important. There's been some dialogue between the city and Irvine Company and Chair Tucker and Irvine Company. You know, we need to move forward with Irvine Center and look at what those opportunities are, because again, the RENA numbers are so high. About half of them, we consider that there's some feasibility in that and we're still studying those. And this is one, this slide is a little tricky here, so.
I'm sorry, Simone. I should probably mention real quickly that this is for council to know. Last year, I had sent a letter to Irvine Company asking them to weigh in on and be part of the formal process, given the number of, I mean, just given how large they are here in the city. And so we sent a letter out and Grace had received a call saying that they weren't, they were trying to decide whether to respond. So I spoke to them and said, "You need to respond." And that said, I don't anticipate them actually playing a formal role in the process based on my phone call. And I think it's important for us to know that. I think it's important for the council to understand that. And so I, and it's also important because as we're moving forward with this discussion, especially in Newport Center and other areas around there that, you know, that are the, you know, the largest, probably largest landholder we've got in the city as we're moving forward is not planning on being a formal part of our, you know, our, or at least not saying that they're planning on redeveloping certain areas for us to be able to send an APN into HCD for turnover purposes, so for the substantial evidence purposes, I should say. So it's, it makes it more challenging, but I think, I think council should know that because it's going to be, it makes our job a little bit harder. And so I think, I wanted to make sure I highlighted that. And also because at the last subcommittee meeting, two subcommittee meetings ago, I had said I expected a letter and we still, we hadn't received it by then. So I wanted to make sure folks knew, at least out in the public, that we had followed up on that and we just haven't received it yet.
And focusing now on the airport area, you can see that, kind of that light yellow cloud around the airport there, and that is the 65 dB CNL. So what that means is that from a noise standpoint, this was measured a while ago, this is not current noise levels, but in our general plan, it's actually, there's a noise contour, and that's 65, it's just, it's the sound dB, sound levels. And our general plan says you can't have housing in anything within that 65 noise contour. So this is going to be a big policy call, so our committee, our Housing Committee, did review those sites that are within the 65 CNL. They found 40 potential sites. Again, we're trying to explore every opportunity, every avenue, so we don't impact our existing residential neighborhoods. So this is, this is going to be a really important subject matter going forward with the city council. Does the city council want to change their policy and allow residential in this zone, which typically we've never allowed it? And, you know, with our Airport Land Use Commission too, they're pretty opposed to having any residential this close to the airport. So I just wanted to share with the council that our committee is exploring every opportunity and every avenue, and we're still, we're still reaching out to these property owners.
I apologize. One last, one other thing on that particular one. At the last Housing Element Subcommittee meeting, Brett Fierstein came and presented on a potential housing development that would satisfy quite a bit of affordability, that would be in this particular area. And Debbie Allen called in to specifically say that she appreciated that because it was part of the golf course and she loved the idea of potentially constraining the airport further. So I wanted to point out that this, so it's broad appeal, but, and it's also not exactly like if we, if we move forward with this, and I do say if, but if we move forward with this, any housing would be new and people would be, would know what they're getting when they're moving in. But anyway, it's worth, it's worth pointing out that that was an, that was an interesting discussion at the last meeting on this particular issue.
Mr. Blom?
So just real quickly with that slide, so we don't allow housing, but there are housing already in this area, correct? I mean, even as I look at what's shaded, I mean, it looks like part of Mesa Drive is there, right beyond the golf course where there's that little side element. So there is currently housing there, we just don't allow more. Is that correct?
That's exactly the case. We've got neighborhoods in Santa Ana Heights, Mesa Drive, and some areas south of the river there, south of the golf course, you know, behind the YMCA, if you will. So yes, there are housing there, and so there are limited opportunities because of the safety zone and the high noise, but you know, it's definitely something that we're looking at because we pretty much need every site we can get at this point.
Correct. So does that, so say someone wanted to go in there and redevelop an area like that, where maybe the single-family homes aren't what we're looking for, does this ordinance inhibit that from happening if they're looking to change use slightly?
Right now, the general plan, for example, the golf course site, you know, is zoned for Parks and Recreation, which is reflective of the existing golf course. And so there would have to be a general plan amendment to change that. And so the question today that we're discussing is whether we should include it as an opportunity list, and whether that, you know, opportunity would be appropriate in the high noise area or there is a, there is a safety zone from the airport, the main runway there. And so I think those are the questions that we're looking at and what the right density would be and affordability, you know, I think, given the noise, it might be less expensive land, so it might be easier to do affordable, but you know, all of these questions are on the table for the committee and the community and the council ultimately to weigh in on.
Wonderful, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and kind of switch subject matters, really. And this is really just more of a kind of looking at it in generality. You know, we've, from a city staff standpoint, we have gotten some feedback from different property owners, and it's not just the ones that we've reached out to with regards to from the Housing Committee, but we've had, you know, conversations with, you know, office property owners and hotel property owners, even retail. And, you know, they're looking far out and they're looking at, you know, what is going to be that recovery timeframe for themselves as a property owner? You know, and here's the big, broad question, when is the office vacancy going to return to pre-COVID? And nobody could really answer that. I mean, clearly, there's a vaccine, there's a lot of optimism for 2021, but then you have, you know, telecommuting and the Zoom and all the virtual meetings that are taking place, so do you really need all those office spaces? You know, our hotels are dependent on tourism, international tourism, and so when is that going to come to full recovery? And it's not just, "Great, we have a vaccine," but you've seen, you know, our European allies have kind of shut down their countries and really limited that travel. So when do we see that full recovery? You know, it's different for a restaurant, you know, a restaurant can recover relatively quickly, but it's not the same for a hotel, it's not the same for an office building. So that recovery timeframe is much longer. We think from a staff level that we need to act immediately, we need to step forward now and not wait till the Housing Element is completed. You know, we think there's opportunity to start working on our general plan, start working on some amendments, because it takes time. It takes time for us to do the amendments, it takes time for us in our coastal zones to get, go through the Coastal Commission. We don't want to trigger green light, that's not our intent, but our intent is to provide flexibility in our general plan, flexibility in our codes, so there are mixed-use opportunities so property owners don't have to sit there three years or file bankruptcy or just wait for the international markets to come in. So that's going to be really a policy question for the council, and we want to get your thoughts maybe towards the end of this and see what your thoughts are. Do we go ahead and just start initiating a general plan amendment? see what your thoughts are. Do we go ahead and just start initiating a general plan amendment just to help some of these uses to allow some more of that residential, so they can add value to their property? Switching gears, we're going to talk about ADUs. There's been some discussion at the community level. There's been discussion at the housing committee level. So we wanted to have this discussion with the city council and just kind of share what we see with regards, from a staff standpoint, on ADUs. So ADUs, we know, can be counted towards RENA. But the question is, how much ADUs can be counted towards RENA? There's thoughts about using ADUs to solve all our RENA issues. The reality is, we just, we don't see that happening. We don't see that we can use ADUs to solve all of our problems. It is a piece of the puzzle, absolutely. HCD, and we've had a lot of dialogue with HCD. They provided a guidance document. We call them on the phone. We talk to them. They provide something called Safe Harbor. They say, okay, what is your average production of ADUs? Well, if you remember, in our, in our city, we never allowed ADUs until 2018. So before, pre-2018, our answer was zero production. I understand there are some granny flats in our Coron del Mar throughout the city. Yes, we can legalize those. But we don't have permit history to prove to HCD that this is our production rate. So from a, from a production rate standpoint, we've calculated, we, probably for our RENA, it's about 170 ADUs. And I'll show you how we get there. I'm jumping up two slides, and I'll go back one slide. It's a little bit out of order. So here's our production rate. Our production is 21 on average per year, 21.25 units per year. That's the average that we've calculated. We've scrubbed the data. This is definitely a work in process. But last week, we told the housing committee it's 200 units. Now we've dropped it down to 170. So you take your average, multiply by eight years, you get a production rate of 170 units. So if, if we want to have a higher ADU count to be counted towards RENA, we have to boost our production. That 21.25 needs to go up higher. What we've been hearing from HCD is, HCD is getting a lot of phone calls, a lot of comments about using ADUs to solve everybody's RENA issues in all the cities. And HCD is starting to get nervous about it. And they're saying that we, they may impose monitoring for even your, your standard Safe Harbor production. And so what does that mean? That means they'll, hypothetically, we'll say, we'll go with 170 units. They'll monitor us for the next two years and see what our production numbers are. That means we have to have it permitted and constructed. If we're below the 170, then, and they're monitoring, then they'll say, okay, you have to go out and rezone and add those units back into your housing element. So taking that concept, if our Safe Harbor number is 170, and we're not sure if they want to monitor that or not, if you boost that production by 100%, which is a big number, 100% is a lot, your production now is 340 units. And if you boost it up to 200%, again, a big number, our production is 510 units. And now, when we're boosting it above our Safe Harbor, HCD has made it very clear, they're going to monitor us. They want to see that we are producing those units that we've contemplated. And they're at that, the, kind of those last sentence there. So if, if our unit count, our production is 510 units, but the true number is actually 200 units, that means we've got to find 310 units. That means I got to go back to and update the land use element again. And I have to be careful not to trigger green light. And we have to go through this entire process again in finding those units, those 310 units, because we can't hit our target numbers of, say hypothetically, a 510 units. So, you know, this, again, RENA, ADUs is possible to help us with RENA, but we don't think it's going to solve it. And I've heard comments from the community to shoot for 1,000 units, 2,000 units. I'm just, you know, from a staff standpoint, we're, we're having a lot of hesitation. And we want to kind of turn to the council to get your input with regards to how to look at ADUs. And maybe we can't, we're not going to solve it today and let, really let the housing committee finish their work on the housing element. And we'll come back with a draft housing element. And we can kind of get more finalized on some of these policy decisions. But this is kind of a, an idea of how the ADU system is going to work with regards to RENA. If I go back one slide, you know, how do we boost production? You know, there are permit fee waivers the council can implement, standard plans. We are already kind of working on those. You can have a dedicated staff member. And then when I said, you're going to have to find those, those units, if you don't produce them, that's considered no net loss.
Ms. Dixon.
Mr. Duj, just a quick question on ADU. So with these new laws that have been rolling in effect the last three years, have we gotten to where their ADU may be built by right? So they don't have to go through a permit process? Isn't that what the current law?
It is. It is by right. And right now, our production is about 21 units per year.
Even, so that was my point. Even with those relaxed standards, ADUs, we're at this level.
That's correct.
So it's hard to, other than the items that you suggested there, with a person to shepherd these through, we've done about all we can to encourage the production of ADUs.
We definitely could maybe do a little bit more if I go back to that one slide, you know, permit fee waivers, you know, no, don't charge permits. But I've heard the council at the study session on Saturday, where our revenues are just not there yet. So, you know, I'd have hesitation to even recommend that to the council. We are going to develop standard plans. You know, there's only so much we can do at the staff level. At the end of the day, it's a property owner's decision whether they want to build an ADU.
That's another thing, standard plans. I've heard HCD is contracted with some organization that has developed the standard plans that can be pushed out into the communities.
And we're working with HCD and OCAG on that. And so we're going to, we're trying to work on towards getting our standard plans also.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Brenner.
I think an interesting factor is the sales efforts that are going on. I'm sure all of us that own property are getting emails pretty frequently from these people who will build ADUs telling us they would love to help us do that. So I think we might see some ramifications from that, because the people that are doing these ADUs are really put on a hard sell with property owners. We might see a difference there. And then my other thought was that when we're talking about the numbers that we come up with, it feels to me like we're going to be going back and forth with these people for a long time. It's not going to be anything set in stone. And, you know, whether they're, whether they're enforcing upon us, or dealing with us, or helping us, or whatever they want to call it, there's going to be a lot of give and take. So it's not, I don't feel like we're under the imperative of getting it absolutely right the first time, are we?
Right. So there is definitely a lot of back and forth with HCD staff. And I'll show the schedule here a little bit later. We'll have a draft for you in April, and then we'll send that draft housing element to HCD, because we want their comments. We need their input on this. They're supposedly helping us.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think by October, it'll be more set in stone. But right now, it's definitely a draft that we're trying to kind of massage as we go forward.
For someone to build like a 750 square foot ADU in their backyard, what would building costs be? Minimum 350 a square foot?
That's a very, very good number. I've heard 300 to $350 per square foot.
And to get your, you know, to get your investment back, it's going to take forever, right? It's going to take a long time.
That's true. If you're, if you're renting it, you know, you'd have to run that pro forma and see what your return is.
If you're looking at strictly from a business perspective,
Correct.
You know, and you've got a loss of privacy and all the rest of it. So I can see where there's headwinds for those reasons.
Yes.
And also, if someone does a junior ADU in their home, there, none of this absolves them from following code in every respect, correct?
That's correct. You still need your, your emergency egress window. You need your insulation. You need heating.
Right.
You need your electrical outlets in the appropriate locations. Plus, you need a little kitchenette.
Yeah.
So there's definitely requirements for even the JADUs, too.
And what happens if you're doing a portion of your home, and your home was built in 1950, and your, your foundations aren't adequate? Does it trigger that?
Absolutely. You're going to be required to retrofit your foundation system to meet current code. You know, the city's going to permit an actual dwelling unit that has to be habitable and meet current code.
Right.
And so if the foundation's not there, then that property owner's going to have to spend the money, expose it, and retrofit that existing foundation system.
Right. So it's
It's costly.
It's a big ask.
Correct.
Yeah. And that's going to be real headwinds on existing structures and someone building it. I mean, I thought we're building an outright new structure in your backyard, when you've got sewer hookups and the whole nine yards. It's, it's an expensive, small house you're going to build.
Brad, I just wanted to add, and if you're renting it to your kids or your mother-in-law, it's going to take even longer to get your investment back.
Don't even think about it. Mr. Blom.
The quick numbers, we've run on them, show about a 25-year return, about a $425,000 investment. So you can figure if you're breaking down low rent return on that, plus cost of outfitting, I mean, it's, it's a tough sell, no matter which way you're looking at it.
And then I don't, not to go on in this, but, you know, if you intend to sell your property and take your, you know, husband and wife $500,000 tax break, if you're renting part of the property, does that impact that?
I don't have the answer to that.
So these are all things that are part of this, that make this a tough road
Decision. Correct.
Tough decision. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and just switch gears and just talk about fees and, you know, how we've done business in the past and, you know, what we see going forward. So we have, in the past, have negotiated development agreements. And development agreements are really required by our code. And so there's two conditions for a development agreement. If a developer is doing a general planned amendment, or even a legislative amendment, and they're adding 50-plus units, it's required by code for a development agreement. And that is a negotiated development agreement. It's an agreement between two parties, between the city and the developer. Typically, when we do these development agreements, there is a public benefit fee portion that is paid by the developer. So these are fees that are negotiated that come out, and we use that money to pay for, in the past, we've paid our fire stations, our library, our, some of our parks, and our future junior lifeguard project. What we're seeing, the trend going forward, kind of projecting out, what's the situation with our public benefit fees? Well, we see a downward trend. We see those funds are drying up. And if, if the charging statement in our code is that you need to have a development agreement if you're doing a general plan amendment, once we plan for the 5,000 RENA units, there's not a need to do a general plan amendment. So there's not going to be an opportunity to do general plan amendment. There's not going to be an opportunity to even negotiate a development agreement as we go forward, because it's really going to be by right zoning. You're going to take all these housing units, put in your housing element, and then it's going to transfer into your land use element. Now it's in the general plan. You're never going to need a development agreement per our current code. So if we kind of project out what we see with our, our public benefit fees, and again, this is just a trend line we've shown for the next five years, and it changes for the next 30 years. But for the next five years, those private public benefit fee contributions really come in very little. It really diminishes quite a bit here the next couple of years. So the, really the question is, what do we do? Well, what we can do, state law allows cities to study and adopt what we call development impact fees. And these are established fees. They're not negotiated. These are studied fees to address impacts that are reasonably attributed to new development. So it's generally, what I've seen, it's a fee based on a unit, whatever that fee is, and that fee is studied. So you would project out what your future needs are for fire stations, parks, community centers. And then you'd have a consultant do the analysis and say, if you're going to project out 5,000 units, your average fee would be X per, per unit. So we just want to kind of, kind of daylight this subject matter with the council, get a little bit of input. And we like to kind of plan for a future study session about development impact fees. And not, not something that we need to kind of kick off today, but we definitely need to, would like to come back and have further dialogue with the council about impact fees, just because we're not going to see the public benefit fees as we go forward for kind of funding our facilities. Kind of wrapping up here with the presentation, just a little bit on scheduling. So our, our consultants are working hard and putting together a draft housing element. That housing element, the draft will be released to our housing committee for comments in March. Then we'll be back to our planning commission in April. And then back here with the city council at the end of April. And it's a really, kind of a receive and file. And, you know, it's a draft. There's going to be gaps in it. It won't be a perfect document. So definitely want to get kind of that preliminary thoughts from the council when we come here in April. And then from there, that's when we send it off to HCD, and they got 60 days to kind of review it and provide us comments, so we know where to focus on. Again, we're, our intent is to meet that October 2021 deadline. Of course, we do have a buffer, about 90 days. But, you know, we're, we're still tracking pretty well to meet that deadline. And we're looking forward to kind of sharing the draft document with you. In the meantime, we are going to kick off the EIR here next month, because we're starting to kind of stabilize and identify what our project description is with all, and where those housing units are going to go. As far as public engagement, we've done a lot of virtual meetings. Just because of COVID, it's, it's gone virtual. We have many more ahead of us. We have one coming up with regards to February 24th. It's all virtual. And the community can definitely go to NewportTogether.com. You can see our schedule as we go forward with our virtual meetings and our housing element committees. And again, those housing element committee meetings, those are public meetings. I mean, we're encouraging the community members to participate in these meetings. And it's, and it's virtual, so it's, it's pretty easy now with Zoom. They can do it from their house. But we're encouraging everybody to continue that, that public engagement. I know this, this RENA concept is, is, it's a difficult number to swallow. And we're having a hard time grasp, from a staff level, putting arms around it. But this is the direction we've received from councils to come into compliance, and that's what we're working on. So a few topics that we've talked about here tonight. You talked about initiating a general plan amendment just to help those properties, as I talked about, those office, hotels, possibly retail, just to start to kick off that, that amendment process. If you have any preliminary thoughts on ADUs with regards to aggressive or not aggressive, or just wait to see what the housing committee kind of puts together. The housing committee has not been aggressive on ADUs, just because of what I've shared with you. It is, it's difficult to make ADUs solve all our problems with RENA. And then if you're comfortable with us coming back and just talking about development impact fees, and I know Council Member O'Neill, you had additional policy questions or comments. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah. I'm going to be speaking for a little bit here, because I've attended a lot of these, these Housing Element Subcommittee meetings. I have a lot of thoughts on, on a lot of the discussion that's been happening down there. And it's, it's incredibly complicated. I do worry that we will not reach compliance by the end of this process. And it will not be because of lack of diligence or effort at our staff level, or at the subcommittee level, or at the planning commission level, or at the city council level. It is just simply a product of the, the calculations that are being discussed here. And I want to make sure I'm kind of walking through some of this, because I do think that one of the things that Newport Beach should do and is doing is making a really good faith effort to find as much compliance as we can. And so, you know, I, I was, I was dismayed about a month, month and a half ago, when a publication I read and I really enjoy called Cal Matters had published something that was just, it was, it was skewed in a way that made it seem like Newport Beach is just this, you know, we had five units in, in our last cycle, and that's all we built. And it just wasn't, it wasn't accurate. And it frustrated, it was frustrating. And so, you know, to, to our mayor's credit, he submitted in a letter, which Cal Matters published, and also Cal Matters changed a portion of the article, actually, to reflect the information and data that our city staff provided after, after it was written. And I appreciate that. And that same data was then used in a way by the Orange County Register recently, where they graded all of the cities around Orange County and said, how did they do in their last cycle? And Newport Beach got a B+. Frankly, probably deserved an A. Just, we apparently just missed, we didn't have enough production in their view of the second of four affordability levels. But we had overabundance of production compared to what our RENA goals were for the other three. I, like I said, I think we deserved an A, but all right, I'll take a B+. And the reason I mention that is because if you compare us to every other city around us, we beat them. And, and so there's this, there seems to be a, this, this thought process that's going out right now, that, that Newport is, you know, this anti-housing, you know, averse to, averse to housing, affordable housing in particular, city. And that's just, that hasn't been historically true. It's not historic, it's not true going forward. It hasn't been true in projects that we've been approving even just this year alone. I think it's worth mentioning that, because it's no good, it's these good faith efforts that we've got to continue to, to move forward on. You know, one of the things that is going to be really important as we're moving forward on this is, it's not like we need to find 4,800 units and just start applying it in. It's 4,800 units at very specific levels of affordability. And I really encourage everybody, and I probably should have asked for this to be included in this, in this study session packet, I encourage everyone to go read the subcommittee, the affordability subcommittee, subcommittees discussion. It's, it's a little over 20 pages. It is dense, but it is really good. And it's an explanation of how affordable housing works, how it's financed, how it, how it makes sense in certain situations. And one of the things to note is that when you're talking about the affordability levels, it's accounting determination. It's not a city by city determination. And so when you're talking about the, you know, very low income unit, for example, you know, very low income unit is going to cost more depending on how much the ground costs, the dirt costs. And so if you're going to go out and finance this using tax credits and trying to find a way to make money as a developer, because most of, most of them are non, are for-profit, not nonprofit. There are nonprofit folks in this sector, but for the for-profit ones, they're trying to find as much money as they can. And so when you do that, you're not going to go find the most expensive dirt you can and then build on that. It doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. And so in order to incentivize affordable housing units here in, in our city, the two probably most popular approaches will be direct subsidies, and we'll talk about that in a second, and the other would, would be density bonuses. And we've had density bonuses being discussed and that's something that some of our public commenters have made sure to highlight as they've gone through this. If you are building at a, and I apologize, I'm forgetting at the moment, if I build very low income units, what's the, what's the ratio? Is it, is it?
The minimum would be 5%.
Okay. So assume for a moment that, you know, you were building 100 units and you would get a density bonus of how many if you built five very low income units?
You could get up to 35% density bonus. Then you would have to provide five units.
Yep. So in that situation, the calculation for a developer is instead of 100 units, you're now building 135 and you only have to do five very low income. That does not get us very far when we're trying to figure out how to get 1,700, is it? I'm sorry, I should have these numbers right in front of me. The very low income portion of our 4,800. Let's just go roughly.
Yeah, it's, it's roughly, it's roughly half of 2,400. So, you know, in the 1,100, 1,200 range. Yeah.
Okay. So, so let's, let's just say 1,200. So you got 1,200 very low income, you know, another 1,200 low income, right? So in
That would, that would be combined. So it, our RENA is roughly, and I don't have the numbers in front of me. I apologize for that, for it's 25% very low, 25% low, and then 25% moderate for a roughly 71, 72% total. I'm sorry, my numbers don't add up. Below market, right?
No, that's about right. I, I think, I think we're right, right? So 25% is very low income. That's about 1,200.
I guess my math is
That's okay. It's fine. You're right. So around there. So, so we're talking, we eventually need to find a way to get to 1,200 very low income units. You cannot do that using density bonuses for the 100% of it. It's impossible. We don't have that much space here in the city, let alone infrastructure when we're talking about sewage, roads, schools, et cetera. And so it's really hard. It's just really hard. And I, and I, and I encourage, like I said, I encourage everyone to read through this because even if you wanted to talk through just the tax incentives, and that's the third idea, the tax incentives alone are really hard because first off, there's only so many of them. There's a finite amount of tax incentive money that's out there. And so there's a lot of competition for it. And again, if you're doing the competition for it, there's not a great reason to come into Newport to do it when you could do it for much, on, on land that's much less expensive. And so there's, it's, it is really complicated. And so on that direct subsidies issue, one of the things that we're going to be needing to deal with, one of the slides was talking about development agreements. One of the things that I think we're going to find is that even for the projects that we do have a development agreement on, the development agreement money that we normally would be using and setting aside for CIP is probably going to be eaten up in, in lieu fees. Because in order for us to incentivize the, and, and sorry, I mean, in lieu, in lieu of having affordable housing in your project, you'll need to put aside a certain amount of money that the city will then hold on to and then use as direct subsidies, whether purchase of land and give it away to a developer for permanent support of housing or something like that. And so you're going to see the development agreement discussions go more, probably lean more toward the in lieu fees because in order for us to incentivize affordable housing here in the city, we need to come up with a series of many, many things. And that, by the way, that, that subcommittee report has nine or 10 different ideas on various things the city could do. But it's, it is really, it's really hard. It's going to be really, really hard to get to this, to this point. So, and then the other thing is, you know, I, I don't imagine a scenario where folks in Newport Beach are still going to be super excited about density. I don't really frankly, like high density, super high density. You know, I, I don't really see a situation where people are super, really excited about putting in towers, for example. I can't imagine why I wouldn't think people in Newport Beach wouldn't like towers, but I, I seem to recall a reason for that. Yeah, anyway, but, but you know, you're, I think you're going to, yeah, removing the sarcasm, I will say, what we, so I agree with Simone when he's running through, when, when he said, we've got, we really ought to be doing things now because there are, for a few reasons. One of them is it continues to show good faith effort as we're moving forward along this process with HCD. I, I think that Newport Beach really, we may not end up being the poster child for, you know, for, for developing as much as is needing. I mean, that's frankly, probably Santa Ana right now, given they've already approved all of the units that would satisfy their RENA for the next eight years. Good for them. But I don't, I also very much don't expect Newport Beach to be the poster child for the opposite either. And I think that the continuing good faith efforts that we can show would be really helpful. And so, you know, some of the things we can do now, and, and when I say things we should be doing now, I think the things we should be doing now are things that would be what I would almost call like low hanging fruit in the, in the concept of housing production. I don't mean, for example, you know, trying to do an overlay right now that would have high density development in a, in a particular area. I don't think, I'm talking, I'm not talking about things that would, where people would sit back and just think, man, we really need to push back on that right now. And so I think we can do this through two different ways. I agree, we should be doing a general plan amendment. And again, it would be a general plan amendment in the context of a handful of things that I'm going to go through that I think are, would be fairly well accepted by members of our community. And then I also think we ought to be looking at a council policy too. And the reason I mentioned including, creating a council policy is because I think that there are going to be times when there's going to be, when, you know, when staff will need to do interpretation issues that would, would be helpful to just have a council policy while we're working through the general plan amendments as well. And the reason for all of that is because I think it, it also will bring some people who are not engaged in the process now out and be engaged with the process once they actually see these good faith efforts through a council policy, through a general plan amendment. And so I want to run through just a handful of them. I'm going to take a break from talking for just a second because I've been talking for too long. Okay. So I want to run through a handful of them. So I do think we ought to create some, we ought to create an overlay zone. And I, I think the overlay zone ought to go into areas where we can incentivize mixed use. So some of the areas we saw, for example, would be some of the areas in the light industrial area. I think areas up in the, up in the coastal zone, but up in the airport area in particular, I think we ought to be looking at some, you know, trying to do some kind of overlay zone. Again, not high density development. If we get to the point where we find that we have to do high density development in that area, that ought to go through the land element and through, you know, through some pretty rigorous discussion. But for now, that's what I'm talking about is, is more, is, is doing that. And I think we probably need to change some of our code, which would require a general plan amendment, which would require a, going through coastal. So all of this I'm about to talk about, except for the, the policy side, and I'll, I'll talk about the council policy in a second. But for this, let's talk through general plan amendment that needs to go to coastal. So I think we need to look at an overlay zone in areas in the coastal zone, but in the airport area. And then I think we ought to be looking at a mixed use also in the, in an area like the light industrial. I think we ought to be looking at the 65 DBA CNEL contour. You know, the, the last housing subcommittee I thought did a great job of talking this through. I think as a matter of policy, we're going to just need to change that policy here because in order to incentivize housing and see the kind of housing production, not necessarily the, that specific project that the, that Brett Fierstein was speaking to, but, because I, I haven't seen, I mean, he hasn't, they haven't submitted a project. I have no idea if it's a good project or not, but the concept of it, I think we're going to have to look at that. And so that may end up needing to also be a, a general plan amendment as well. One of the discussion, one of the things you mentioned in there was the idea of a hotel and motel residential conversion. If we were going to do that, which I think is a good idea for a handful of reasons, but I think there needs to be some constraints on that concept. So I think we're seeing a lot of the hotel and motel industry. First off, obviously they're suffering pretty dramatically right now, but you're seeing a lot of them convert over a hand, a, a portion of their properties into, you know, residential concepts. So sort of like a condominium, but it's still part of the umbrella and, you know, they get all of the, the amenities that go along with it. I think we're seeing that. I think that that's, that should be something that we should probably start looking at as kind of a consistent use with some of the, you know, as, as, as we're moving forward with the hotel and motel ideas. You know, we've got, I won't name it specifically, but we've got a very large hotel right now in our city that has been shut down for a year. And that seems like if they wanted to convert some of their units over there, that I think that that's probably the direction that I would suspect they're heading. I don't know because I haven't been told that, but it seems like that's one of those areas that a lot of our hotels are probably going to start looking toward. And, you know, the advantage of that for us is, you know, a lot of property tax, obviously. And, you know, and the advantage for our residents is you're converting on a one-to-one, and that's what, one of the things I'm going to mention, I think it should be a one-to-one ratio. You're converting on a one-to-one ratio, units that already exist, but into housing. And so now we get the housing without a substantial increase in traffic like we would for new housing units. But at the same time, I think it's important for us to have a diversity of, of uses in our city. So I certainly wouldn't want to see a one-to-one conversion of an entire hotel, for example. Frankly, I don't even want to see it at like the 50% level. I'm not sure. It'd probably be something for us to discuss up here, but I'm thinking more in like the 25, 30% range on a one-to-one at a maximum. If they did that, by the way, and, and there wasn't the option for a development agreement as part of that, I think there needs to be something. And this, by the way, I think needs to be both a council policy and a, and a general plan amendment. But if there was, if there was this, I think we should be requiring either a development agreement or an in lieu fee or something like that. Cause there, we can't just have it just a straight conversion, especially a straight conversion that's at the most premium residential. I think that there'd still need to be some kind of pay in on that. On ADUs, again, this would be both a council, this may, I don't think we would need to do a general plan amendment for this, but I think as part of the council policy that we would be encouraging staff to, you know, to, to look toward on the hotel and motel conversion issue, I think we ought to be creating a council policy that has an, incentivizes ADU production. So I agree with the idea of a fee waiver, in particular, a fee waiver if there is some kind of affordability component to it. I'm not really sure if we can do that. If we can't, then I guess we just kind of go with the 68%. I understand what you're saying on the, on the finances, Simone. The, the fee waiver idea on, on ADU production would be frankly, so minimal in the grand scheme of this, that it'd be the cost of doing business to ensure that the state doesn't come in and take over our community development department, that I would be willing, I think the council would probably be willing to give up those fees in order to incentivize that. And to that point, I actually think we ought to be somewhat aggressive in our ultimate number. And there's a big difference though between using that phrase aggressive in the context of what you were just showing us, and I'm not really sure what that final number is versus what I think some of the members of the public are hoping we would do. I don't, as much as I would love to see us count 2,000, 3,000 of the 4,800 toward ADUs, that's so unrealistic in terms of what HCD would allow for. I just, we, we just, we're just not there. But I do think that if we take steps like this, you know, and have standard plans, have fee waivers, then I think that this is one of those things where, you know, I think, I think at least again, kind of that good faith effort approach to this needs to be taken into account. And then in terms of the office buildings and parking structures and commercial buildings, this would be both a general plan amendment and also that, that council policy I was referencing. I think that the, I think the council ought to have a basic statement of preference for diversity of economic uses in our city. So, you know, I think we should have a preference for having a diverse industrial, office space, residential, commercial sectors. But, you know, given the, given the preference for housing, I think that we should be looking toward, you know, conversion of areas of the city that currently have certain uses, but, you know, and, and give a, you know, give, give that, give that goal. And this might be a direction to planning commission as well. Require planning commission to review annually or biannual, or not, yeah, every couple of years, I should say. The, you know, the, the areas of mixed use designation that are being only used for single use and with a preference toward, with a preference toward the use of the actual mixed use, encouraging residential and actual mixed use environments. That's a lot. I know it's a lot, but what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to, and that's, that's the use of a, that's a good use of a study session, but there's so much going on right now at that housing element subcommittee. And there's so much, there's, I'm, what I'm trying to do is it's sort of like, it's just, my dad's always call it peel of the onion. When you've got a really hard issue, just keep peeling. And right now we've peeled so many layers. I think at this point, we've got to just, just keep going. And so everything I think, everything I listed, I think is one of those things where, is one of those issues where, would we prefer to do all of this? No, I don't think so. In a normal situation, but this is just not a normal situation anymore. And so I think that doing a dual track approach here where we've got a few of these options coming back to us quicker than, quicker through a council policy and then also initiating the, a general plan amendment for a more longer term solution is very helpful. It shows that progress. I think it would bring people to the table and, and get us more housing units using some of these, you know, low hanging fruit options. And then look, when we, when, when all of this comes back and our land use element comes back to us and we're looking at some of these areas and thinking, ah, this is way harder. Well, you know what? That's when it's going to be a much harder conversation. But right now, let's try to get some of the easier stuff and, you know, at least keep moving forward on it. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you. I'm just going to talk real quickly about the business side of this and kind of the underperforming uses that we're looking at. Predominantly for me, that's a focus of Newport Center. You know, I run it every day and every day I see less and less traffic throughout it. And when we see that happening, you know, I look less on recovery and I look more on repositioning. Recovery is a frightening word in business because it means you have to rebuild in order to regain. Repositioning means you found an alternative to continue your business model. So very often recovery comes with sales and a lot of big changes throughout the city. And we have a lot of empty office space throughout Newport Center right now. And I know it's never been popular in the past for getting people into Newport Center. But it's interesting because the way I look at this is kind of our downtown. I spend a lot of time here. I love this area. And I've noticed a lot of people have come to love it as I have, you know, with the Meridian condominiums, they've proven to be an asset to the city over what we had before. And I get nervous when I see buildings kind of falling into a dilapidated state because we don't want to put the reinvestment dollars back into them. And I think what the citizens of Newport want more than anything, and when business interests, business interests and the residents align are when we make something better. And I think that's a pretty easy understanding for all of us is that when we increase the beauty of the city, when we take something that maybe wasn't what we wanted it before, and we increase its value, well, it doesn't mean we have to get bigger and more robust. Sometimes it just means we have to reimagine. And I think that you guys have done an amazing job. I mean, this document, the work that you've done on these numbers, I know, an insurmountable task and you've taken it on. And I think a lot of things have fallen into our lap. You know, for all the pitfalls of COVID, we've also gotten a lot of great people within our city refocusing on our city. And when we find people that want to rebuild the city from within the city, we're not looking at outside firms coming in. We're not looking at New York investment. We're not looking at something from LA. We're looking at people from Newport wanting to put money back in Newport. back in Newport. I mean, we're blessed. And when that comes with elements, and we'll talk briefly about how the Irvine Company doesn't necessarily want to play with us anymore, that does us a disservice. They, agree or not, they've put a good amount of money into this community, they've built some beautiful properties, they've made it a destination in lots of different ways, they've helped enhance who we are. We don't want people not to want to play here. We want them to come in, we want them to spend money. It's what's made us who we are. And so I don't think there is a recovery coming to a lot of Newport Center. I don't think, Simone touched on it briefly, and I think he's spot on. Zoom has changed the market. You don't see these buildings turning into what they are. And so from our approach as the city, if this takes five years, then we're going to have vacant buildings for five years, we're going to have buildings where the homeless will cultivate in vacant spots, we'll have to work with landowners to move them out. It becomes a problem for the city as a whole. And I like what you said about we've got to get this process moving quicker. And I think we have a lot of options on the table to make that happen. I think you have the support of the community more than anything because what we don't want and what I think all of us get the most messages are about aren't always a project. It's usually about when the city isn't looking like Newport should. When there's people living in bathrooms or on street sides, when it's getting crazy and noisy. And I think a lot of these things that we're looking about for these RENA numbers aren't about making the city more raunchy and getting it more excited. It's about finding each district and what it means. And I think for downtown Newport, which is Newport Center, we're not flanked by residents on all sides. We have a beautiful buffer of the Civic Center. What we have in there above the golf course is a place to get some density because people want it. You see the market changing. And if the Island Hotel, I mean, I know Will don't want to talk about it, but if the Irvine Company would come back to play and put some residents in there, I know Kevin would live there, he loves here. I think that there is a potential to see a reinvigoration of what the Civic Center means. And so if we could find a way from the staff level to direct that, that would be amazing because I think that this has the ability to kind of breathe life back into an area that we need. And so thanks for all the work. I mean, I would love to push us to initiate a general plan amendment on that and to work with whatever we can to make these things happen. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, staff, for bringing focus to what we've been talking about for so many months on housing and how that fits into our overall general plan. So I'm very supportive of whatever we can do to accelerate changes to the plan and council policy. Mr. O'Neill has a good idea about that, just to give a framework, an operating framework so potential investors, property owners know where they can play and invest in Newport Beach. I want to just look at the process. We all know, I guess it was two years ago, that we initiated the discussion about launching the general plan, a new general plan, because the general plan we are operating with and that we are talking about amending is the 2006 general plan. So my question is really a process question and asking you, Mr. Juerges, how do we integrate the housing element, which is going to be bolted on to the new, or will be a part of the new general plan, I presume? And you're also doing the circulation element in parallel as we speak, or the planning commission is. And there's a meeting, that should be another meeting that was on your calendar list of items because circulation, is that this week?
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I thought so. So how transportation fits into the housing issues. And then you had talked at a prior council meeting about the land use element, which would be part of the new general plan. So this is probably what we really need to get into. I don't want to slow things down on any immediate changes because I think we all know that we've got to move efficiently. But my question is, how do you see the process? Do we need to get started earlier on the land use element to incorporate some of this new thinking?
And thank you, Councilmember Dixon. And I think Councilmember O'Neill said it best, it's that low-hanging fruit. So yes, it all ties together. And so what we're talking about today is really starting off that land use element update, but doing the easy portions that we can do now. We have to be careful about not triggering green light with some of these amendments. We know that the land use element is going to generate that voter initiative where it needs to get a vote of the electorate because of the so many housing units. But I think there's stuff that we can do, that preliminary land use element update, that's what we're talking about today. It's that easy stuff now that we could start implementing and doing the general plan amendment. Councilmember O'Neill talked about conversion of hotel units, right? Conversion from a one-to-one basis, that's not going to trigger green light. Can we add some of that mixed use in that light industrial area without triggering green light right now? So those are the things that we want to look at. It's that preliminary work that we're going to do. Yes, you're right, Councilmember Dixon, we're getting a jump on it. We're starting off and moving forward. And I think it's the right decision because it takes so long for us to process everything. That waiting till the end of the year to switch to the land use element update, we're going to lose that eight months ahead of us. So it all ties together. We just want to start on the easy stuff now.
Well, I support that, and that's smart thinking. Other areas, Mr. Blom was talking about fashion or Newport Center. We've talked, and I think there's an item coming forward in a future agenda, in the not-too-distant future, about the industrial area of West Newport. There's a specific application, I guess, that's gone through the planning commission. And I've said this publicly before, I mean, that area is ripe for mixed use, residential, retail, commercial. I mean, it can really be a fantastic new village, as Mr. Blom talks about, in terms of how we want to look at future development. I just wonder if we can accelerate that discussion because there is so much potential just with your charts, looking at that specific area. Instead of doing, looking at one-off pieces of property, I mean, really, as I'm saying this, I know this just means you're thinking, more work, more work, more work, how are we going to do all this? But it's such an opportunity that needs change before it goes through the formal, I mean, again, to accelerate the general plan amendment, go through the amendment process of the current general plan, so this folds into a new general plan. But I would just allow us to think creatively of that area too, as well as Newport Center, and to really accelerate that good thinking that will bring in more residential. One other thing I was going to say, well, I guess I did bring up the circulation element. Oh, on the E to ADUs, I think all the conversations that were talked about, we need to get as much as we can, whatever way we can, and incentivize property owners to do that. I think, just so everybody knows, with ADUs and some part of the new proposed legislation in Sacramento really restricts parking requirements. ADUs, there's no parking requirement. So we're going to be bringing in all this additional potential population growth with no new parking. So hopefully, we are all driving driverless cars or we have little private airplanes flying around because I don't know where, and the circulation element, I'm sure, is going to be addressing that. Also, on the development impact fees, not many things keep me up at night. I sleep really well, except I worry about the financial health of the city far out because of the change in our financial, facility financial planning and the development fees that really support foundationally the financial health of the city to do the extras beyond the general fund. We have a robust general fund, and we will get back to that after the pandemic. But from a development standpoint, thinking through, as you pointed out in your chart, that there's going to be a significant reduction, that is a significant impact on the type of facility building that we do, public building, park building, maintenance, repair, replacement, those funds are not going to be there. And from a finance standpoint, long-term financial planning standpoint, we have to figure out what's going to replace those funds because the budget, the balance in those funds are, except for some recent development that we've just approved, thankfully, we're going to be really facing some difficult times because the general fund can't support all the nice things that people have enjoyed in Newport Beach. Okay, but very fine job, hard work, everything's focused on community development for the next couple of years. Thank you for what you're doing, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Ms. Brenner.
In talking about a general plan amendment and our dealings with the Irvine Company, I don't think the irony is lost on anyone that all these years, people have been beating up on the Irvine Company, and now we're saying, oh, please help us out, that we really need you to look at Fashion Island and Newport Center and see how you can redevelop that to help us because for so long, it was like everything they wanted to do, we said, no, 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 we can't do that. So I think that there's some fences that need to be mended there because of that. And hopefully, they can see how they can help us, but we can also help them. And I'm wondering if when we're talking about the general plan amendment, is that something that would be desirable enough to them that it would bring them to the table, for them to see that if we're talking about the general plan amendment, then they really do need to be involved with us? Would that be, Simone, is that accurate?
I think it's definitely worth that conversation where if the council's willing to initiate that general plan amendment, maybe that's an opportunity for them to say, okay, well, let's sit down and talk about what their vision for the Newport Center is.
Yes, okay. Well, that would be great if we could do that. And I just wanted to say, as you were talking, Will, especially about all the affordability and the Subcommittee and with the Housing Element Update Committee, I would like, I don't know if everyone else would agree to this, but I would like to have a study session specifically on this affordability issue because I think there's a lot that we really need to understand and perhaps inviting that Subcommittee to come to us and do a session like this so that we can, this affordability issue is something that we really do have to get our arms around. So I don't know, that was just an idea. And then the other, I had another idea about, we're getting ready to have our quarterly meeting with the Newport Mesa Unified School District, and I don't believe we've got on our agenda to talk about that piece of property they have above Banning Ranch, but it might be worth just initiating the conversation and discussing it with them when we're there. And let's see, oh, on the ADUs, if we could offer, I know it's staff time, but if we could offer like a free inspection to people that, for instance, I'm thinking in my neighborhood, there's a lot of places that may already be pretty much prime for an ADU or junior ADU. If we could offer people the ability to have an inspector or someone from community development come and look at those properties with them, that people would know whether they have the option of doing that or not, it might be helpful. And I think that's pretty much everything I had to say. Oh, on West Newport, I, many meetings ago, requested that we do a specific area plan for West Newport and specifically mentioned that it could be a village like Corona del Mar, but I'm thinking if that could be a citizen-driven project, that if you could get the property owners and the people who live in the West Newport area to just start getting together to brainstorm and talk about how desirable this could be, it's sort of like starting from scratch, not totally, but a little bit, and that maybe you could really develop some excitement to get people just brainstorming about how this could be really an enhancement to their side of the bay. Thanks.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, I want to make sure I didn't leave the wrong impression. It's not that the Irvine Company is refusing to get involved in the process, it's that right now, they would prefer not to, and at some point, they might come to the table. So to your point, Ms. Brenner, that's why I'm talking about the low-hanging fruit. I'm not talking just about them. I'm talking about other property owners who look at this and say, oh, you know, that actually, that might make some sense. But I'm talking on the low-hanging fruit side. I'm not talking on the, oh, you have a nice little medical, low-rise medical building, wouldn't it be great if you built a 15-story process? That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking truly the low-hanging fruit, to Simone's point. So that's why if you dual-track this on an approach where you're doing the general plan update, which you'd have to do through planning commission, so you have plenty of opportunity for public comment there, public comment here, get it to Coastal, plenty of comment there. And then, so now what you're dealing with is some interpretation issues here and there on ADUs and hotels and things like that, and, sorry, office buildings here and there, and a standard statement of, look, we prefer the diversity. So that's why in interpretations, when we're dealing with a conversion, we still prefer mixed-use approach where we're a certain percentage, maybe going to housing, like I said, on an interpretation issue side of things. There are things you can do on a low-hanging fruit side that can get people to the table where they say, oh, okay, yeah, okay, we're coming. That's my thought process. But I did want to make sure that I'm not leaving the impression that they have just said, no, we're not, we're never going to, we're not talking to you about this. It's just, you know, and yeah, maybe there's some mending fences, but anyway, we'll work through with that.
Mr. Blom.
I just wanted to concur really quickly with Will about moving forward with some of these. If we can get deals going now without going through the lengthy process of Coastal because there's some things that seem applicable to what works with you guys, I think those are the best conversations we can have. And to Ms. Brenner's point, it's the mending fences situation here, that if we can start mending these fences with people that want to invest in our community, let's work with mending them. I think it's only going to benefit all of us in the long run. And the long process is worth it always in the long run, but it requires a lot more work from you guys. And we love that, but we also want to always back you up on the decisions you guys make and kind of making the job easier to get some of these things going right now, to show the state how much we're willing to take this seriously. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
I'd like to say I concur with the recommendations to proceed quickly with this whole, the whole plan, if you will. We've got to create this housing, and we need the community's buy-in, and we need partners. And we have no time to waste. But I will say, at the end of the day, let's say 15 years from now, we've built all this, the success will be whether these are places people want to live, whether the scale is a human scale, whether they're amenities. And so, and we know, by far, most of the builders in this town do great projects just simply because of the value of the land. They're very aware, builders are more aware than anyone else, they know how to build a great project. And every now and then, we get people who don't do great projects. And so that's my concern. And I know we can guide that and we can encourage and push their property rights issues, but when we see it, something that doesn't look good, we really got to watch it, I think. We're going to have so much going on, and it seems to me, we're going to have tremendous pressure on staff to process all this and watch it and have to be careful that we're all, I think, pretty much aligned on, this needs to happen. There's sort of a deadline, there's a, on us. But so it's important that we ramp up, that we can accomplish it and wind up with good projects, well-built projects, and enough oversight to create communities, is what we're doing, that reflect Newport. And certainly, obviously, the landowner of Newport Center knows how to build great projects. But there's others that I think might need guidance, and I don't know if we can come up with guidelines. And there's just a whole sort of a human element that we need to make sure is there, that they become places people want to live. And then the great thing about this to me is that we're keeping the integrity of our current neighborhoods. So that's so important. All of our villages, all the neighborhoods, the only thing that, and I don't think it threatens them, but the ADU question, if you have six ADUs on one street, one short street block, then it sort of impacts the parking because many times, an ADU will have two or three cars. And you're going to have a couple of people living in there, maybe a couple with a college kid. But I don't think that will happen. I think most people will refrain from building ADUs for the reasons we've discussed here, the cost, the privacy issues, and the fact that they don't have to have the income, they don't need the income. And so I believe they're not the threat that a lot of people might think they are. We'll wind up with, I think, the 170 number kind of makes sense to me. And then gradually over time, there'll be those things. But I think- be those things. But, but I think, you know, the most important thing we're doing here is preserving these villages and our neighborhoods. There's, we're not, you know, going to have a problem there. So then it kind of boils down to the circulation issues. And I know we're working on that. But I think the most important thing is that people can be in their neighborhoods, be in their homes, and things pretty much stay the same. Because for all of us, what does this mean? This means, in spite of the state, the numbers saying that we're having a migration out of California, it sort of doesn't make sense, you know, that we're cramming all this housing down, and the state's cramming all this housing down on cities. But the long view is, population's going to increase. You know, immigration may well increase substantially. And we're, people are just going to have more kids, because that's what we do. And so, it's about the rate of change. And all of us that have lived here for a long time, you know, we've seen this change happen gradually. But we're going to hear, we're going to have a real uptick, uptick in the rate of change. And that impacts people, and their, sort of their feelings about the community and their feelings of comfort, if you will. So that's the challenge here, is doing this entire effort well, from start to finish. And it's a big challenge. And I think most developers will do it well. But I think it's important that we staff up to handle this, it's going to be a lot of permitting, a lot of oversight, a lot of plan review. It's going to be, for your department, it's going to be, I can't imagine, it's going to be producing that many housing units in that timeframe. Along with, Newport's not going to stop doing what it's doing now, which is, you know, a lot of, awful lot of stuff coming over the transom at the planning counter. So I, we need to kind of grips with that. Those are additional costs. And plan for how we, how we handle this from a, from a processing standpoint.
Ms. Dixon.
Just to piggyback on that, and what Mr. O'Neal and Ms. Brenner talked about, the Irvine Company, as I was sitting here listening to what we're doing and laying the foundation for more development, more housing, and doing the right thing, what the state wants, it strikes me that it really was the vision of the Irvine Company that has created the city that we enjoy today. I mean, the downtown center, Main Street is Newport Center, and that was the original vision. And it would seem a very big miss for that same visionary input to not be part of this conversation. And, yeah, as Ms. Brenner said, you know, a lot of projects were denied or criticized. And what we're dealing with is, what we're talking about frankly, is what the mayor just said, we're trying to add on to the beautiful city we currently have, without changing the character of our villages and the way we're laid out and the composition of our neighborhoods, which was created by the Irvine Company in the '60s. And that was the original vision, when all this was empty land. I mean, it's been developed within a system, a plan, a Newport Center, of course. So I would like to recommend whatever we can do to at least get some conversations. I know you have been talking with them, but, and let, maybe with a little more appreciation to the role that they played fundamentally at the beginning, and how that we continue to carry out that vision and comply with what the state is requiring us to do. And incidentally, speaking of the state, as you know, in the last two years, there's just been a flood, a tsunami of legislation to change local planning laws and take away local control, as we've talked about. There is current, all the bills that didn't make it through last legislative session, many of them have come back again. And it's this bill to buy right. And there's one that's gaining a lot of steam, and we'll see, it's early days in the legislative session, that instead of allowing to demolish in a single-family neighborhood, a single-family residence, and build a duplex. Now, there is a bill that would allow up to six units on a single-family property lot. So we are going to see dramatic change coming from Sacramento in some shape, that has to be factored into everything that we're sitting here talking about tonight. It may just be compounded. So we've got a radical change that's coming because of Sacramento. We really need to be considering all of these factors that are driven by external forces, and how that impacts our city in the form of some visionary framework. And we're doing part of it with bubbling up from the grassroots, with the community involved in all these discussions, and the Housing Element Task Force. But it also has to come from a master, more macro thought, of what the city is going to look like 25 years from now. All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, with no more comment from the dais, we'll go out to the community room for public comment.
Mayor Avery, members of the city council, this is Jim Mosher. I don't know how many telephone calls you're going to get about this subject, but until just a few minutes ago, I thought I was going to be able to take off my mask, because I was the only member of the public in your community room, which I think is an indication that the public engagement in this particular issue has been a little bit anemic. I think one of the reasons for that could, maybe it's a small reason, is that the city's online efforts have been rather non-intuitive. I understand the Engagement Center for the Public is a separate website called Newport Together. However, if residents interested in the housing element go to the main Newport website, they will not discover Newport Together if they look for information about the housing element. They have to realize that they could click on where it says "General Plan Update," very non-intuitive. And when they get to Newport Together, if they click on the tab that says "Housing Element," it does not tell them about the plan or schedule. That's on the main page, so it's very confusing. As to Councilmember Dixon's earlier comment about the process and the Housing Committee being assigned the task of updating both the housing element and the land use element, I'm still a little fuzzy on what's going to be delivered by the council on October 15. I have the impression from this presentation, it's only the land use element, but the general plan as a whole has to be consistent. So I think it's only the housing element, but the housing element presumably will promise that there are going to be changes made to the rest of the general plan. And if it's promising that there's going to be more housing, I think that's a staff interpretation, that that itself does not trigger green light, that that's not a general plan amendment. The housing element is certainly part of the general plan. And however that works out, I do believe that the conversion of hotel rooms to housing, however you interpret it, that is going to trigger green light. And then finally, as to Mayor Avery's concern about people who do not construct great projects, we haven't heard too much here about the penalties. If the city overpromises how much development we're going to produce, we've heard we only have to plan for it, we don't actually have to build it. But if it doesn't get built, we've heard that there's going to be monitoring and so forth. We've heard that there's big monetary penalties. Are there not penalties of some sort that is going to cause, if we do not produce what we promised, that the development from those bad developers will automatically be approved? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment from the community room? All right, do we have any phone calls? We have two. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Nancy Scarborough. It's clear to me that we're all coming to the same realization, that what the state's asking us to do is really very unreasonable. Mr. O'Neal said it earlier, it's nearly impossible. The numbers that Mr. O'Neal was looking for from the housing, the RENA count, are available on the Kimley-Horn Report, which is, was distributed to the Housing Committee in December. I'll just give you the remaining numbers. For our remaining RENA, what we need to provide in the next eight years, very low is 1229, low is 831, and moderate is 1,022. Above moderate, we have already provided zoning for more than we need. We are over by 1,119. So we don't need any above moderate homes. So there's a strategy here, I think. If we use accessory dwelling units as a large portion of our RENA need, RENA numbers, we can give ourselves some time to work out the details of the percentages of the ADUs versus high-density development versus reallocation. I do agree with all of the council members who have stated that we need a bigger plan. This all needs to be looked at together. I think we can't segment it up into little pieces. But what if we estimate the higher number of ADUs and monitor those for permits as we go along? We can monitor them for the next three, four years. If we have to spend a little extra time to monitor them, so be it. We can make adjustments in future years. All of this gives us time to research and thoroughly plan for the alternative, if we have to get there, which is high-density housing. And I don't think that anybody in Newport Beach is going to buy into that, so that's a really hard sell. The percentages of 5% low income to 95% above moderate or moderate income are just not attainable in this area. There's no one that's going to agree to that. And the other thing I just wanted to point out is that West Newport, although it would make a great mixed-use area, it is the only industrial area in the city. And I think that we need to consider that when we're talking about converting that to housing and business. We need to make sure that we don't lose our only industrial area as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller?
Hello, please mute and go ahead.
Yes, my name is David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I've been listening to what you've been saying. And my observation is, I think it's okay if our city is in noncompliance and we give a housing element that doesn't meet the HCD requirement. I don't think we're going to be alone. I think there's going to be a number of other cities. I think it's inevitable that the state is going to have some kind of enforcement person, whether it's through the Attorney General's Office or through a new division that they set up this new compliance unit. I think that's just something we're going to have to live with. We should plan for it. What I'd like to hear more from the city council is, when you're making these statements about how we should change our city, is that you look in the camera and you talk about the general welfare of the residents, and how these changes are going to at least maintain, if not improve, the quality of life for the residents within the city? I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing things that sound like they're going to degrade the quality of life and the general welfare. And I appreciate Councilman Blum's comments about reinventing. We always have to reinvent as times change. So we don't need to stay the same, but at the same time, we don't need to just tear down the quality of life in our city. So given what I see as the reality that we're not going to comply with the housing element, and that the state is going to take some kind of proactive measures against all the different cities that are going to say they can't comply, the city, if you look at the history, the state's going to be passing more laws, whatever excuse the cities come up with for noncompliance, the state's going to fly under law. So I think we should be looking at proactive measures to protect our quality of life. It's also disheartening to hear staff and members of the council talk about circumventing green light. That's the will of the people. I don't believe I'm hearing that. Nor do I believe I'm hearing that you want to piecemeal the general plan. The first element of the general plan that is to be amended is going to trigger other elements to make internal consistency. That's a requirement. And yet, you're talking about proactively making some changes to the general plan to make this an easier process. Where is the people? They are first. So I think you really need to look at things in a different light, and perhaps talk to the Irvine Company, who has planned much of this city, as you say, and ask them why they're not cooperating. Maybe they have a different perspective and see that this is not in the best interest of the city. So please reconsider the course of action that you're talking about, and look toward the people of Newport and their best interest first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more calls? That's it? Okay. Bringing it back up here, and do we have any more additional comments? Mr. O'Neal?
I think it's worth just real quickly responding than saying, no one, no one just talked about trying to circumvent green light. There was literally nothing up here that was talking about that. I think it's probably worth mentioning that. And then, in terms of working through, the, I don't think I would call it piecemealing what we're talking about in terms of a general plan amendment. What we're talking about is, are the, I think I call them low-hanging fruit. And there's, he asked, where are the people in this? Well, there's this, there's the discussion that would happen at Planning Commission, there's the discussion that would happen again here, there's the discussion that would happen at Coastal Commission. There's a lot of opportunity, a lot of opportunity for public comment and discussion going forward on this. Anyway, I, I just want to make sure that's abundantly clear, that this process that we've laid out here, and you can see on that website that I had mentioned earlier about the Newport Beach 2020 Housing Action Plan, I mean, there's a lot of work being done here. So I, I think it's, it's not exactly fair to characterize it that way. I do want to come back real quick. So while we were, while we were listening, I mentioned kind of dual-tracking and bringing back some of the discussion. Some of that is more appropriate for general plan updates. One, some of it's appropriate to do also in a council policy. So I want to give kind of what I thought a council policy would actually look like, because I'm realizing, I realized as I, after I finished, that there's, it would probably have been a little difficult to actually write a council policy based on that very long discussion. So here, here's the three elements, I think, I would, I would ask for, to come back. The first would be, and this would all be one council policy, but anyway, the first one would be, the first portion would be a preference for ADU production and direction to interpret our codes consistent with that preference, and also direct staff and Planning Commission to bring forward further policy for code changes to be consistent with that, as, you know, we're, as we see other cities or HCD providing further guidance. The second portion of that would be a direction to Planning Commission to annually review mixed-use zones in our city for properties that are single, non-residential, that are using it for single, non-residential uses. And to ask Planning Commission to provide policy ideas to the city council for incentivizing residential in those mixed-use areas. And then, the third would be a preference for interpretation of our codes, allowing one-to-one hotel conversion, but no more than 30% of the actual hotel. And then, within that same, I would ask that we, you know, to the extent that there's, that there's such an interpretation, that such an interpretation would carry with it essentially a requirement for some kind of DA or in Luffy, perhaps both. But I don't want a just straight interpretation that doesn't allow, that doesn't, that then allows someone to avoid a discussion about DAs or in Lufis. So anyway, those are the three that I would suggest come within a council policy.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Jurdis, do you have any other questions about direction?
No, I think we're clear.
Thank you.
And for Brown Act purposes, to bring back a policy, it'd be good to go ahead and get, raise some hands if you're...
Right. So we have concurrence on council, or?
That's unanimous, 7-0.
Great. Now's the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So do we have any public comments on non-agenda items, or agenda items, in the community room?
Good evening, city council. Once again, thank you for all your service and for all your time into all these items. I'm here to... I'm here to just talk briefly about an item that came off of the agenda recently, and that's the, the short-term housing rentals on Newport Island in particular. Most of us on the island were a little disheartened when we learned that the Coastal Commission wouldn't even entertain the, the possible amendment that might have come their way. And we're a little bit concerned about why that is, especially when we were told that the, at a Planning Commission meeting, when, when the Planning Commission asked what the Coastal Commission thought, the word we got was, well, the Coastal Commission is waiting to hear from us. So, but we also are very respectful of the city's staff and know that they will do a good job in working with the commission and finding a, come up with an amendment that they will entertain should the council want to make that recommendation. The majority of the residents on Newport Island have initially wanted a ban on short-term housing, but we know that that's not realistic. But what we do want is stronger codes, and we want owner occupied. And why owner occupied? We want owner occupied because we're getting a lot of third-party operators on the island. They have no sense of community on the island. They're, they're profit motivated, and we're community motivated. So over, over 90% of the residents on the island have signed that petition. It's about 130 some odd signatures and more are coming in every day. So we are a rather vocal majority. One of the things that we talk about why we wanted the ban is because we know that they are banned in Zone 1, R1 zones. And we feel like we're a de facto R1 zone. We're being lumped in with the vacation rentals, and we don't feel that that is a part of our community. But again, we understand. We understand. What we're looking for is a little bit stronger code enforcement. We feel that code enforcement is being put on the residents and it's being put on the police, and we feel that that might be a little bit misguided. We feel that the code enforcement should be on the operators. And if the operators can't control their guests, then they should be cited, they should be suspended, and they should be revoked in that order. But to put it on us as residents and to put it on the police, when the fact is, a citation, for a citation to be issued, it takes many, many complaints, many complaints. We're also a little bit concerned that the new codes are a little bit weak in that they're going for square footage. And the fact is that some of these places can fit up to 14 people in the house, and that's not consistent with the neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
So we're looking for stronger code enforcement, we're looking for owner occupied, we're hoping that staff does a good job with working with the Coastal Commission on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the community room?
Craig Sheets, I guess you guys got a flash drive for me? Going to take it a little slower this time. If I get a little extra time, I'd appreciate it. Okay, first of all, and I've done my research with a couple guys that are familiar with radiation. They catastrophically destroy the water, the ocean, with oil first. And as well, you could see what's stored on those ugly things in the ocean. They really shouldn't be there as far as I'm concerned. But there's guns and, and meth labs concerned. I'm going down to the Gulf Ocean next to take care of that business. It's not so thick here, but Gulf is very thick with dope and guns. Next, please. As you can see, after they oil the ocean, they will radiate it. This will longevity the radiation, killing all ocean life, arrange cycles, and everybody else could figure out what, what will happen there. Next, please. That again, nuclear inland and on sea. Trains, it's all in freight, it's hidden. Customs is responsible for this. I could see the ships are getting a little clogged up out there, that's good news. Next, please. Next. Here we go, the diversion. Gulf oceans full of AK-47s, we're right on the Mexico Gulf. This concerns all oceans. They unite together as one water body. It's the same water body. You got AK-47s, and I used England Trucking because I love the Clydesdale horse, and I love the English language, so what can I say? I don't know what trucking company they're in, but the diversion is mobility on land. As long as it's running around, stopping at every truck stop, nobody's going to know when they come out. Next, please. Freeways. You think license is a privilege? It is not. It's been a plot since the beginning. As you could see, if a nuclear blast hits every car, nuts and bolts will hit every human being before the heat. That will be a projectile. Correct. As you could see, the enhancers are all the fuels. Transmission fluid is coming into play as far as DNA comes up next. Then we have our military bringing in drugs since the 50s. You know how many kids are stuck on heroin right now dying? They're putting fentanyl in the heroin and the meth, and it's killing the kids. And that's a bit ridiculous for adults operating in a military operation. Can we go with the next one, please? Vulcans, you are not humans. Urine will prove it. And officers of the law, be careful because I don't care about your pension. I do not. It's got to start somewhere, so all those people are going to want that back. You know, I don't know what to say. This is all I can do for right now, but I'm going to, I'm going to be coming at, at this urine problem pretty heavy. And Newport Beach, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. And tell Jennifer I said thanks, she's been great. And Mayor, have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the community room? Do we have any phones? Hello, please go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Avery, this is Dorothy Kraus of Newport Beach. I apologize, but I did not hear the names of the last two speakers that spoke on non-agenda items. Can I, did I miss something or were they not stated? Thank you.
Hello, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and Councilmember. This is Jody Bol, and I would like to say that I appreciate all your efforts into the housing and the homeless and everything that the council does and the time that they spend. I wanted to mention item number, number four, the G1 tree policy, and ask that the council consider adopting the community recommendations to add testing to all landmark trees. And we really appreciate your desire and willingness to embrace the Newport Beach green infrastructure, which is very, very important. And we hope that you will consider voting yes on this agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have one more call. Hello, please go ahead.
This is the council. They're talking.
Please mute your device and go ahead.
...to all landmark trees. And we really appreciate your desire and willingness to embrace the.
Please turn off whatever device you have on there.
...important. And we hope that you will consider voting yes on this agenda item. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any more comments? Any more calls? Oh, we can't hear them. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We're obviously running late here, and we will adjourn for 20 minutes. So back here at 6:20.
22 minutes.
22 minutes, all right. Mr. Muldoon says 22 minutes.